Yes, Dr. Burrow. Tonight, we have two of our board members that received awards at our November meeting in Nashville. And so tonight, if I can, the first one is, if you will, come on up this way, Mr. Scott. I'm gonna get here so I can play this. TSBA, our certified board members awards, and they do it for, from level one to a level five. And they, they do this because they want to find somebody that is invested in school boards, they want to find somebody that really wants to learn more than just sitting in a board meeting every time. They want to go in, and they really have to set up and do a complete portfolio of what kind of things they've done, the activities they've done, the things they've been involved in. And this award is really given to that recognition. Those five levels of recognition are level one through five are recognized, one through four are recognized at the fall district meeting, but those that receive the level five master board member are recognized at the annual TSBA convention, which is held in Nashville. And Scott Gillum Waters was rewarded the level five master board at the last meeting in November. And Scott does an amazing job of trying to make sure, he's on our, he's the chairman of our budget committee. So we meet extra every month to make sure that we go over all the budget and the agenda and make sure everything that we're doing is in line with what we have approved in our budget. And, and he's been such a very good supporter of Anderson County schools. Even though he lives in Oak Ridge, he is very good supporter of Anderson County schools, I have to add that. So, so let's give Scott a big hand to that. If I could have Joe Wiggins come on up. So many times, the board, they do a lot of recognition of our certified staff and our classified staff and even our students, but it is great when we get to recognize board members. And Joe Williams, she has been a long supporter of Anderson County schools. And, and how many years ago did you receive the master board level, Joe?
2013.
2013, she became a level five master board member. And at that point, it was, it's the highest you can do, but they have this thing that's called the Scholar Circle. And the Scholar Circle recognized board members that have achieved the level five, plus they've attained 900 or more boardmanship points and training and activities with the TSB board membership. Currently, there's only thirty-three board members that have received this award. And let's give Ms. Williams a big round of applause, because that's a great. As you know, Ms. Williams, she is, she is a, really and truly does a great job with our school board, she is a very good supporter of Anderson County schools. She is on so many committees, she's really a champion for Head Start and Pre-K, and she works on their committees. But, but anytime you go to activities after school, on the weekends, a lot of times you'll see Ms. Williams there supporting our students. So she does a great job with that, so thank you for that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We just want to take time here real quick, just to touch base and talk about what's happening with the partnership between the Anderson County Sheriff's Office and the schools. You know, one of the things that we talked about when we were campaigning was getting more SROs in schools. To me, it's incredibly important. It's a, it's a super, super tough job. I've always said that, one, your SROs have to have a pretty unique talent set, because they have probably more interaction with public than most road deputies do, because of just the nature of the schools, with the parents, the children, and the events after hours and things like that. One of the, one of the things too, that they deal with, is some of the stuff that just absolutely scares police officers into death is juvenile law and, and child custody law. That, that's scary stuff. You gotta, you gotta make sure you get that right. And so they, they are really impressive with what they do. So we've been working with schools, Joe Fogarty kinda spearheaded the grant process for Governor Lee's SRO. And I'm proud to announce that we were able to secure some of that money, and we actually have fifteen SROs, so all fifteen campuses are covered. We still have seventeen schools, so we're hoping eventually that we're gonna have SROs in every building permanently assigned, but boy, we are really, really close. And we're absolutely thrilled with that. Another thing to add is, because of the expansion of this SRO unit, it's now our largest unit we have at the Sheriff's Office. We have more deputies involved in that than we do any other. So a couple of things came out of that. So we got to look into the organization of that unit, and we had a sergeant and a vacant corporal's position. So what we did at the Sheriff's Office was decide to kinda bust it up and, and create a second corporal's position, so that we have kind of a north and south end corporal to help make things run smoothly, particularly if our sergeant's out. So Wendy Kim and Bannick, if you guys would join me up here. Sergeant Garrison is our sergeant over the SRO unit, has been for quite some time, and she does an absolute fabulous job for us. You know, that was one of the things when we came in fifteen, sixteen months ago, when we started evaluating all of our different units. We, we looked at the SRO program, we were pretty, pretty pleased with it. The, the amount of dedication that they have and the things that they do that go beyond what we require of them is simply amazing, to be quite frank with you. So what we did is we ended up with a process where we posted to see who had interest in becoming the corporals for the SRO program. Ironically enough, we had people from the road apply, right? Because they wanted to get in on it, because it's the hottest thing going, right? I have to be quite frank with you. So I'd like to introduce our two new corporals, Sean Bannick and Kim Ley. And again, we appreciate you guys for all you do and the, and the partnership we have with you. I knew, I knew we were gonna have a great partnership with the school system, but it is really exceeded expectations. Everyone is just absolutely fabulous to work with, and I'm very appreciative of that. Thank you guys so much.
I want you to know how much we appreciate the SROs, that we feel so much better having them there. They know more what's going on on the campus than, than a lot of our teachers do.
Well, you know, the, one of the things that I'm really proud of them about is they, they really take and pay attention to what's happening off-campus, too. And that is one of the things, you know, if there has been an unfortunate incident off-campus that may impact a student, then they have that information, and they make sure that the other SROs and the appropriate school staff are aware. It just really creates a safe environment. And I'm telling you, you really have to be a special person, because I'm, not everybody could be an SRO, just like not everybody could be a school teacher. So, because I know, I have a lot of teachers that have told me that if they had too many more students like me, they wouldn't have stayed in it. So, and I get that. So, but I'm telling you, I'm super proud of them, and thank you guys again so much for all your help.
Well, thank you.
Next, Dr. Burrow, we have the Above and Beyond Award, and we'll start out with Margaret Burrow.
They're not usually this shy, I don't know. I'm gonna stand over here then. Well, no, maybe over here. Amy Leonard and Sheila Miracle joined our school nutrition program in the fall of 1996, and they are about to close on their 24th year with us. Amy is our official soothing phone voice. Call tomorrow, just to hear what a wonderful phone etiquette she has. She also processes our family meal applications. She orders and manages USDA commodities and fresh produce. She processes invoices, manages our social pages, and is the keeper of our pictures. Because Sheila and I are not keeper of the pictures. And she comes up with promotions and contests to keep our managers engaged. Two years ago, she established our local chapter of our association and served as president. Sheila is our field supervisor. She has sixteen cafeterias and eighty staff that she has to visit and teach and continue to maintain our very rigid standards. She also does financial records and handles the cafeteria material purchases. When there is a challenge in the field, Sheila goes out and digs in and keeps it going for our students. Both Amy and Sheila welcome new things and new concepts, and they seek opportunities for personal development and advancement. On a personal level and a professional level, they are the reason our program is a success. On a personal level, I do not know what I would do without them, and I appreciate them
I just appreciate getting to work with such great people throughout the whole county, going from school to school and meeting different teachers and different principals and all the children. It's a, it's a blessing.
You need to come right here. You're gonna have to come around and get your picture taken.
That's what we hate.
Here you go. I'll stand right here. Yeah, you gotta turn it around so they can see you. Just give them a big round of applause. You know, you think about it, and you think about that, there's, there's two things that we do great in this county, and we do a lot of things great, but there's two things that people don't really think about. And that's every day, we bring 6,000 students on buses to get them to our school, and we take them home, and then we feed 6,000 students breakfast and lunch every day. And you think about, there's, how big of a restaurant that would be to feed 6,000 of them. And, and, and they don't have, a lot of them don't have an adult to supervise them like they do at a restaurant, so they do an excellent job with that. Next, if I could have Mr. Downs, Ben Downs.
Dr. Burrow, Dr. Parrott. Board, thank you for allowing us this time to recognize staff that go above and beyond. The Wednesday before Thanksgiving break, I received a message that one of our staff members was having a medical emergency. My staff and I take a lot of pride in responding to medical emergencies, whether it's students or staff, very quickly. That's one thing we do, take a lot of pride in Anderson County High School. And this day, I responded very quickly because I heard one of our staff members was having stroke-like symptoms. When I got to Ms. Taylor, Ms. Tony had already had her in the vehicle and was on her way to UT Hospital with her. So Kathy just went above and beyond her required duties as a teacher at Anderson County High School. For those of you who have any medical experience, know that when somebody's having stroke-like symptoms, getting them to the hospital, to the ER in a timely manner is super important, and that's what Kathy did. She, she knew how to respond, and she took off, had her class covered, we didn't leave anything unattended. But, but responded in a very professional, stayed level-headed, and got Ms. Taylor to the UT Medical Center very quickly, and they were able to do everything they did. She did suffer from a mini-stroke, but has recovered and is back to work now. So I just want to thank Kathy for all she did that day, going above and beyond her teaching duties for Anderson County High School, and we appreciate you doing that, Kathy.
Yes, we do. I just want to thank her for recognizing the symptoms. When I went in, I said, something's wrong with me. She recognized the symptoms right away, and she said, oh my lord, we've got to go now.
But she's not saying what she kindly, and what he didn't say is I was very bossy that day. And I said, Mr. Downs met us at the car and said, do we need to call an ambulance? I said, no, we're leaving.
And we did.
And we did, yeah.
They were able to give me the medication that I needed, and it reversed everything, and everything was great. So you did above, you won Above and Beyond.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We, this one, as you know, we usually do a certain group of people, and this, we've kind of, we sent a thing, we sent a email out to the principal and said, hey, have you had somebody that's went above and beyond? And they always send all these things in, so that's kind of calculating all of these tonight, so.
Sure. So my name is Beth Rader, and I'm the principal of Andersonville Elementary School. And when Dr. Parrott asked us at the beginning of the year if we had someone to think about this year that go above and beyond, so I first looked up to see exactly the definition for above and beyond. And what it says is, you always do more than is required, and those are the people that we want to be around our children, the people that do more than is required or expected of them. So I would like to acknowledge our SRO, Chris Longmirez, for the Above and Beyond Award for Andersonville Elementary. And I had to write it down because I didn't want to miss anything. Our school resource officer, Chris Longmirez, is appreciated by the students, the parents, and the staff of Andersonville Elementary. This school year in particular, he assisted us in rerouting our car rider line in order to keep the children and parents safe and to get them off of the main street, which was Mountain Road. Even though it was hot outside, it was August, he stood with us, and he made certain that our new traffic pattern worked very well for everyone. Deputy Longmires makes relationships with our students and with our staff. He has read to children, played outside with children, and assisted them when they are having a particularly hard day. He has a natural mild manner about him, and yet, when he needs to be in control, he takes charge of the situation and keeps all of us safe. Chris is a huge part of our school family and of, and of our success. At one point, we were lucky enough to have Sergeant Garrison take care of our school, and we absolutely adore Wendy. We appreciate her for sending us Deputy Longmires as her replacement when she was promoted. All of the SROs in our system are appreciated and respected by the students, parents, and staff. We are extremely lucky and blessed to our school board, Dr. Parrott, Mr. Fogarty, and Sheriff Barker for supporting us with their placement of SROs in our schools. Officer Longmires, thank you for loving our school and for making relationships with our students, staff, and families.
I'm just, I'm thankful for the Sheriff's Department for giving me this opportunity, and the schools, we, we work together so well, and the kids, that no matter how bad your day is, you go in the school, and the little ones, they'll run up to you, and they, they look at us like we're heroes. And really, they're what gets us to the day, and, and we're certainly thankful for you all.
If you can, if, if, Dr. Burrow, if it's all right, if Gabe could do his report right now, he has to get back to a, a ballgame this afternoon, they're having homecoming, and he's gotta escort somebody.
That would be fine.
Good evening, Board. Anderson County High School is making the most of our ACT Day this March 17th, and we are giving the juniors the opportunity, of course, to take the ACT, but we are also making it a day for community service for the freshmen, the seniors, and the sophores. And we are calling it the Mavs on a Mission Day. We hope that the whole county would benefit from this, and if anyone knows a particular business that would need a community service member, please call Anderson County High School, and we will try and make arrangements. We would also like to congratulate our hostess students, who placed in the region a few weeks ago. Jada McGee, who received first place in dental science, Ally Perry, who received third place in medical terminology, and Cameron Shears, who received third place in behavioral health at, and they had this, this convention at Carson Newman. Two more AC students, Madison Hopper and Kristen Foster, received their Certified Nursing Assistant certification in the past few weeks since our last meeting. Congratulations to Ian Campbell, Jaislin West, Meredith Grant, and Will Beard for being selected to go to the East Tennessee, Tennessee Band and Orchestra Association, Ollie Senior Clinic. Our Future Business Leaders of America Club had students participating in competition over the past few weeks. Cameron Shears placed first in healthcare administration, Myra Mushard placed first in personal finance, Courtney LaFonbois received third place in spreadsheets, and Zach Lester placed third in Intro to FBLA. And now, thank you, Board, for letting me come up here, and our basketball homecoming happens in about 30 minutes, so I will see y'all next month.
Person should be heard, being non-approval of the agenda.
Dr. Burrow, before we vote on that, I need to add something to the agenda, please.
Yes.
As the chairperson of the Personnel Committee, I would like to give notice that we will evaluate the Director of Schools at the School Board Retreat on February the 29th, and we'll discuss extending the Director of Schools' contract at the March 12th School Board Meeting.
Thank you. Now, approval of the agenda with that addition.
I move.
Second. Moving second approval of the agenda, discussion. Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will oppose, no motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Moving second approval of consent agenda, discussion. Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will oppose, no motion carries. Executive approval, again, we had down this month. Comments from the chair? Sixth lead winners. I have Margaret McCormick, Briceville Elementary, Special Education Assistant. Glenda.
Okay. I had Hannah Stiles, Lake City Elementary Teacher.
I had Teresa Bailey at Lake City Elementary, and Dale Cantrell had Kathy Lauer at Clinton Middle.
And I have Angie Phillips at Fairview Elementary School. Rachel.
And I have Shannon Ramsey, a crystal assistant at Head Start.
My winner is Holly Harville, who is a teacher at Grand Oaks Elementary.
And mine's Jason Bowe, teacher at Lake City Elementary.
The only comments from the chair is, I think we're all set for the School Board Retreat, 28th, 29th, February, Music City, no, Music Road Hotel in Pigeon Forge. Any questions? TSBA is gonna...
Yes.
...facilitate the meeting.
Yes.
And on Friday night and Saturday morning, and then we have Saturday afternoon to work on the budget and do whatever, whatever we have to do. That's really all I've got. Comment, well, our student board member left. Director's report.
Thank you, Dr. Burrow. Just, just a couple of things. I, I wanna, I'd just like to thank our transportation, I, I think Kelly Myers and Johnny Golden, and we've got some other people. As you know, it's been a trying few weeks with the rain and everything, the flooding and everything, and they've really been a, a champion to be out on the roads. I did get my first text from Mr. Golden this morning at 3:59, and his thing was, is I'm on my way, you know, so anyway, but I want to thank them for making sure that our roads are safe for our students, and our bus contractors do an amazing job of making sure if there's some problem areas out there, they let us know about those things. And, and, you know, it is a, it is a very big responsibility when you put all those students on the road in the morning. And the, the one thing I wanted to say, too, is I've been asked questions, and maybe you've had this question. A lot of school systems go two hours late, or they go an hour late. And years ago, as a, as a school board, as a school department, sometimes we had done those things, but some students would get, you know, the buses don't run exactly at the right time, and, and there is a chance that a student could, a parent could go on to work, or a student could get left out in the cold, or we have had parents that would not know school was being late, and they would go ahead and drop a student off at the school at regular time, and then two hours later, we would cancel school, and nobody was there. So, so one of our procedures in Anderson County, we either go on time or we don't go. And, and I think that to us, it really works better. Our parents still have to have their children to school on time. If at all possible, we like to call it off the night before. Sometimes we can't, it's just the weather doesn't let it be that way. I know Mr. Kami, he, he was over transportation for a lot of years, I'm sure he lost a lot of sleep at night trying to decide whether we were gonna have school or not, and, but, but I really am, again, appreciative of that. Another thing, we had a meeting last week with ESG to go over kind of a, another review about how we're doing on our savings, our energy savings, and to date, I think this year, we're almost $500,000 over what they had expected us to save. So, so those, those things that you all started even before I was director with ESG are really paying off. And when we met today, even with Clay and his group, they talked about how that we, you know, maintenance is really reactive, and now we're being proactive and trying to make sure we catch things before they do completely tear up. So there's just two things that, that are going on, that I really am proud of what we do with our staff. If you get a chance, there's really a lot of stuff in the report I've done to talk about what our students have done and our staff has done. And, and again, I was at a meeting last week with, with TOS in Nashville, and we sat around tables and we, and, and you know how, just like everybody else, people want to gossip. And, and I listened at some of the directors talk about, oh, I've got this board member, and I've got that board member, and I've got this one. And, and I tell them, I said, we've got one of the best boards in the state of Tennessee. And, and you are, you support every student every day, you, you really and truly go above and beyond each and every day to make sure every student in Anderson County has the tools they need, have the curriculum they need to be successful. And, and I hope that people that are watching on TV or people in the audience, that we don't take that for granted, because it is, y'all have done a great job, and, and a lot of you have been on here for so, for, for many years, and you saw where Anderson County was and where we've came from, and, and the, the path we're on, and it's, it's a great path, and I just want to thank you for that. and I just wanna thank you for that.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Committee reports. Budget Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Committee, Monday night, had a couple of items. There are two appropriations. We have those up. One A is the appropriation, really, up to $120,000, I think, for cleanup of the flooding at Clinton Middle School due to a pipe break. So, that, most of that, well, all of that, I think, will be reimbursed by the insurance company. The other, one B, is $10,346 for Food City School Bucks. So, those are the two appropriations. Those have been approved by the Budget Committee and recommended for approval, and I so move.
Moving second approval appropriations, discussion. If not, roll call vote.
Mr. Bale?
Aye.
Mr. Gillenwatters?
Aye.
Ms. Langenberg?
Aye.
Mr. McCamy?
Aye.
Ms. Portwood?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Burl?
Next item are transfers. Those are on the board also. Two A is from the General Purpose School Fund. It's just some correcting some codes for career ladder payments. That's $5,914. Two B is student services, spring attendance conferences, $1,340. Two C is to set up funds for substitute nurse payments. That's $17,000. Two D is to replenish some accounts for audit fees, legal fees, Tennessee School Board Association policy maintenance and copier contracts. That's $46,000. Two E is some additional money added to appropriation we did, or transfer we did a couple of months ago, but $14,277 to purchase a new van for technology. Two F is money for SRO equipment, K-9 supplies, conference registration fees. That's $10,000. Two G is training for reading recovery, teacher leader program, $5,000. Two H is the Central Cafeteria Fund to make some mid-year adjustments. That's $52,700. The rest of them, I, J, K, L, and M are Head Start. I is for playground upgrades and some other needs there. $59,660.24. Substitute teacher contracts is two J, $25,083.92. Two K is travel and staff development for Head Start, $2,000. L is for meals and snacks, $7,161.78. And two M is to transfer funds for shortages in medical personnel and insurance costs, $407.85. Those are the transfers. Those have been approved by the Budget Committee and recommended for approval, and I so move.
Second.
Moving second, we approve transfers two A through two M, discussion.
I have one question for Miss Lynn. Do you know how many teachers we have left on Career Ladder?
It's probably anybody, it's on, 25 years are over, I would say.
There's some back there.
They're all back here.
The newbies didn't get in that program.
Other discussion. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No motion carries.
That's all from Budget Committee, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to reiterate to the audience that haven't heard this before, that we don't take the budget lightly like this, but we go over it in great detail and depth on Monday night prior to the board meeting. So... Okay, Policy Committee.
I will echo what Dr. Burl said about going in depth on the policies. And we met on Monday night as well, and we had three policies to review. The first one is 1.901, Charter Schools. And this is just an update and a replacement of 1.704, and it covers applications, policies, reviews, and denials. And the Policy Committee recommended approval on first reading, and I so move.
Second.
Moving second, that we approve policy 1.901, Charter Schools on first reading, discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No motion carries.
And on the same vein, I would like to make a motion that we delete 1.704, which is being replaced by 1.901.
So move.
1.704.
Was that a motion?
Yeah.
I move we delete it.
Second.
Moving second, we delete policy number 1.704, discussion. Not? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No motion carries.
3.206, Community Use of Schools Facilities. This is a review of the current policy, and mainly it was changed to request that we have insurance coverage when an outside group is using our facilities. And the Policy Committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second.
Moving second, we approve policy number 3.206, discussion. Not? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No motion carries.
And our last policy, 6.402, Physical Examinations and Immunizations. And this minor changes in the policy enforces the requirement for immunizations prior to attending schools in Anderson County, and the Policy Committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second.
Is this first or second reading?
It's still first reading. These are all first readings.
Motion made and second, we approve policy number 6.402, Physical Exam and Immunizations, discussion. Not? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No motion carries.
That concludes the Policy Committee report.
Curriculum. Do we have?
Yes. According to committee, we had one motion to approve the veterinary sciences, the recommendation of Dr. Perret and our Director of Sector Education, that we approve veterinary sciences in addition to the science thing, and I so move.
Second.
Moving second, we approve veterinary sciences, part of the science curriculum, discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No motion carries.
That's all we have.
Building Grounds.
Mr. Chairman, we have one item on the agenda. We met Monday night on Building Grounds Committee, and we discussed, and request by the Boys Club, to use the old Head Start building at Lake City Middle School, students, Mike Swisher, Boys and Girls Club representative, told the board members that the club loses middle school students in part because they don't want to go to the elementary school for activities. He feels that the middle school program will grow if we have a building other than elementary school for those students. Mr. Swisher plans to continue programs that are currently offered to elementary students and include workforce development information for programs. And we listened to him, Mr. Swisher, and the motion passed, and I so move.
Second.
Moving second, we approve the Boys and Girls Club use of the old kindergarten building in Lake City for the Boys and Girls Club, discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No motion carries.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Action items.
I hit wrong, but sorry about that. Yeah, you'll have to do. Teresa needs to make that motion, 'cause you need to vote on it now, 'cause it's on the agenda.
Okay. You ready? As the Chairperson of the Personnel Committee, I would like to make a motion that we evaluate the Director of Schools at the School Board Retreat on February 29th and discuss extending the Director of Schools' contract at the March 12, uh, excuse me, March 12th School Board Meeting. I make that motion, I second. Thank you.
Moving second, we approve the motion to do Director of Schools' evaluation at the retreat and discuss extending of the contract at the March 12th School Board Meeting, discussion.
Are we gonna have any kind of layout to?
It's in your envelope, I think.
Oh, okay.
The evaluation?
The evaluation form.
I think the stuff we need to do, the evaluations in the package that they provide this to them.
And I'll bring copies in case people forget those February. I know, nobody would do that.
Surely not.
If I don't forget to bring the copies.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No motion carries. Now, action items.
Dr. Burl, I'm asking, requesting that we, that you allow us to hire an interim teacher at Dutch Valley Elementary School due to the increased number, student number that's over the state ratio. We now have 26 students in kindergarten, and by state law, once we go over 25, we have to put another teacher in that position, so.
I move we approve the interim teacher.
Second.
That's valid.
We don't have a choice, do we?
Nope. No, I don't know what happens if you don't approve it, but it is, it is a new position that's not currently in the budget.
Do they have space for it?
Yes, I think they, they have space, yes.
Are you just gonna split the room in two now?
That will be up to the principal and Ms. Katrina Oakley, how they do that, and see how they.
I think we're gonna kind of recreate the lab. I think it would be very hard to move kids into a new classroom at this point.
Yeah, so it may be that you may have two teachers in the same room, you know, and you could pull them out, you could do some kind of pullouts with them and things like that, so.
There's some empty spaces.
That'd probably be good.
Right next to the kindergarten room now, so we'll set a room up there, but they'll do some sharing.
Yeah, it's good.
Motion made and seconded, we approve the interim teacher at Dutch Valley, discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No motion carries.
Joe's got the information. Ms. Williams, I'm sorry. I always call her Joe. Ms. Williams has the information on the community assessment and what we need to do with that.
Okay, I wrote it home in notes to them, because it's quite lengthy. The assessment, it's a five-year assessment, and is a 100-page document whose sole purpose is to make better programs and determine services for Head Start and early Head Start. It covers areas such as housing, education, employment, nutrition, and health. And I make a motion that we accept the committee assessment report.
Second.
Moving second, that we accept the committee assessment report. Hope you read it, Joe.
I did. I really did.
All 500 pages?
100.
100. 100. Discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No motion carries.
The next one is community assessment findings. And when we think of findings, we usually think, well, this is something we're going to be sanctioned for. But this is just a cumulative, that's a hard word for me to say, cumulative observations and conclusions of the community assessment. It does not indicate areas that warrant sanctions. It's just those areas that need more attention. And I make a motion that we accept this report.
Second.
Moving second, that we accept the community assessment findings report, discussion. Not? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No motion carries.
The next one, selection criteria. And the committee for all the preschool programs meet annually to review the points allocated on the applications for Head Start. This covers areas such as income, disability, family, and family size, and so forth. And in your packet, you have a copy of the current selection criteria along with the Oak Ridge criteria. And I make a motion that we approve the selection criteria for 2020, 21.
Second.
Moving second, that we approve the criteria, selection criteria, discussion. Not? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No motion carries.
The last one is, is the $143,000 grant application for health and safety. And if it is approved, it would improve playgrounds all over the system, lower the sinks in the buildings to preschool level, and modify some of the doors in the to the bathrooms, as well as other building changes. Let's hope they get this. It's a $143,000 that they could really put to good use. And I make a motion that we approve the application for the grant.
Second.
Moving second, we approve the health and safety grant application, discussion. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No motion carries.
Dr. Burl, before we adjourn the meeting, I need to apologize. I had Scott Bacon was gonna talk to you all about what the Education Foundation was doing, and I had my notes, and I had left it off my notes, so if you could just give him just a few minutes, I would appreciate that.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted, we had a group up here earlier this week from Anderson County Schools who were winners of health and wellness grants from the Education Foundation. And when we concluded that presentation, Dr. Perret asked if I would come tonight just to give you a little, little update about that and a couple of other things. The work of the foundation really is pretty much focused on four areas. We do some grants to students who are having some difficulty when it comes to early post-secondary opportunities, just coming up with those $300, $400 to be able to take that course that they wanna to do. And so, we had three Anderson County High students and one from Clinton High that we've helped thus far this year, and it's totaled about $1,400. We also do instructional grants. It's an ongoing, rolling process. And so, at any time, teachers in Anderson County and Clinton City can apply for those funds. And thus far, in this school year, we've done $3,900 worth of grants, two at Clinton Middle, one at Clinton High, and one at Lake City Middle. The Teachers' Depot is a, is a program of the Education Foundation now. And this year, we, in our four openings, we had 250 teachers from the two school systems that came through. And just trying to use, and I know this is probably a conservative figure, 'cause it's a way overwhelming number of Anderson County teachers that come through just based on the numbers, but just taking 85% of the visitors being from this school district, we come up with a total of $13,000, almost $14,000 worth of value that has gone out to Anderson County school teachers through that. And then additionally, what we announced on Monday, we had winners from Andersonville, Bryceville, Dutch Valley, Grand Oaks, Norris Elementary, Clinton High, Clinton Middle, and Norris Middle of various health and wellness grants that were a result of the Clinton 5K that you all remember back in the fall that Todd Temple does such a great job with. So, we want to just show tonight a total of $8,102 that have gone to those schools that I mentioned as a result of the health and wellness grants. So, we're gonna give this to Dr. Perret. Yeah, try to cash. Good luck with that.
Carry that one to the bank.
But our total this year, and it could grow based on more instructional grants going out, is over $27,000 of impact that the Education Foundation programming has had on Anderson County schools alone. And so, we're real proud of that. Just a couple of things I wanna mention. At each of your seats, you've got a list of the foundation board members. Want to get that information in your hands, just in case you see any of these folks out. You can thank them for their work on behalf of our schools and this community, and you can ask them how, what they think, and get impact from what they see happening through their work, too. And I want to invite you, our annual Teacher of the Year event is on And I wanna invite you, our annual Teacher of the Year event is on the April twenty-first, you'll get an invitation to that, but just wanted to tell you that date, and it'll once again be at First Baptist Church in their Family Life Center, and, and we appreciate any of you that can be there that night to, to congratulate the Teachers of the Year winners from, from Anderson County Schools. That's all I've got, I just wanna thank you all for the work that you all do for young people in this community and being such willing partners, as, as the Sheriff mentioned. We hope we exceed any expectations anybody has about the work of the partnership between the school systems and the Anderson County and Clinton Foundation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Before we adjourn, I, I would just like to commend Scott and the Budget Committee and, and Dr. Parrot for, this is the first year that I can ever remember that we haven't got a list of wants from a school. I think the ten, uh, with ten thousand dollars that we gave to each school has made a big difference in them taking care of those things and, uh, not having to come to the Board at, at budget time to, for that request, and, uh...
They're all afraid I'm gonna take it away, that's what it is. No, they've done a good job. They, they've done a good job with that, and, 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 and again, I have to go back to the maintenance people, uh, uh, Mr. McCamey and his staff, they've done, they've took care, uh, they go above and beyond every, every day to take care of our school systems and make them look nice. There's some things out there we need to take care of, we'll talk about at our retreat, but, no, overall, they're doing a great job.
Did we have any leaks during this tremendous raid?
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
Monday night, I asked for the wish list from a school, and, and Dr. Parrot said, "We don't have one this year," which, uh, which I think is fantastic.
I'd like to congratulate Joe and Scott. Congratulations, thank you, reaching your level, and Joe for holding...
I think we need to give another hand. We adjourned for, let's start talking.